Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 5th Select Board Meeting. The Board is present minus Lisa, members of the town, and water. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing on the agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from July 15. I hear motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 15 to 2025?
A second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Call those in favor. Name. First public comment, we just had one email in, just real quick, in response to the local road traffic and issues. And just the comment is it would be nice and very helpful for the 0.1% of our residents per chief town who listens to the Select Board meetings to hear everything that is said. If those could call, but always speak into the microphone. So just try to speak up and voice your concerns. Any other public comment? No public hearings, no reports of committees, department reports. We have Ms. Sharon Kelly from Berwick, Clyburn. It's for those nights when we keep you here for a long time.
I appreciate it. Can you hear me? Sharon Kelly, Library Director for Berwick. Arthur asked us all to give a little annual report type presentation. And I'm always happy to sing the praises of the library. So I drew up a small sheet for y'all to look at. I'll just read for the people at home a few of the numbers. I don't want to bore you with all of them. This is for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. And for people coming through the door, we had 24,222. We had 282 people sign up for library cards. We had 24,129 items circulated. So those numbers are, sound really significant, and that's because they are. For a little tiny library in a small town, we do really big things. So we have been in the middle of our summer reading program. We're wrapping that up on Friday. But last year's program, people were really excited about, as they are this year. My staff doesn't use the cookie cutter summer reading program that many libraries do. And there's no fault at any libraries using it. It's designed to help librarians put on a good program for the public. And they give you all kinds of ideas in artwork and program ideas and whatnot. My staff, no, they want to create it themselves. So everything you see when you come in in the summer, they've designed. Last year it was Adventure Waits. And they went with this whole story, and we actually even wrote a book. So we don't even circulate, not only circulate books, but we write them too. I don't write books, but they did. And you can check that book out and follow the story of the summer reading as the children did last year. So we had 4,840 people that visited the library during that time. And so in some way, they were participating in the summer reading because we have programs and things set up. 97 children and teens and adults took part in it. And 3,413 raffle tickets. And the raffle tickets represent books read. So that's pretty impressive for that many people. So I can't tell you how important it is for us as a library to always reach out and try and get people where they are. And see what they're interested in. And then we go with that and try and build our summer program. By the way, the staff is already working on next year's. So stay tuned on that. As far as collaboration, we collaborate with probably almost every department in town. Our fire department comes and does storytime. They help us with our book sale. Police department, the same thing. They'll do a storytime. They'll also lug up books and bring them back down. We're always looking for volunteers, for anyone that wants to help out on the book sale, which is coming up in September. I can give you those dates. It's an effort to get it all done, but it can always depend on the other departments for helping us as we try and be very helpful to them too. This year's fire department storytime, we had a patron that had a medical issue. She was actually working in the garden at the time. And I had, oh, it was the police were there for that. I had Officer Fogg right there, and he was able to take rate over and call everyone in. I had the wreck bus, a fire truck, another fire truck, a police car, all in our parking lot. With about 75 people that were at the program. So it was a little congested. But talk about jumping into action and everyone coming together and making that a happy ending and not a problem. And I am really so thankful to have our fire department and our police department so closely work together with us. So another interesting thing, people might not know, the community garden, the library community garden. We generate food for the food pantry. So everything that is harvested will be donated to the Somersworth Berwick Food Pantry. And last year, we donated 143 pounds of fresh organic vegetables. So all volunteer run. So that's another opportunity if anyone wants to volunteer. And then last year, we planted the memorial garden. And that will be in honor to, well, it's to honor people that have helped out at the library, whether it be board members, volunteers, special patrons. And it was planted, and it is bloomed this year. If you haven't seen it, go by and look at it. I, you know, in planting and digging, you think, oh, this will be pretty, that'll be, I'll add to it every year. It just is like taking off. The only thing I need to do is water it. water it, so. It's another way to make beauty and have a place for people to come and sit and reflect and really appreciate their town and their little library. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody from the board have any questions for the director?
I'll just say a little plug to the library, just celebrated the twentieth year of the building itself and we had a little get together and it was really nice because people from the early years came in and I see their names on documents and I see their names around in pamphlets and on the shelf and dedications, but it was really, really nice to meet some of the early people and talk to them. I was able to get two former library directors to attend, Sandy Brumfield came and Melissa Sager, who I was the replacement for her, so it was quite a, quite a nice evening for everyone to share their own stories about those early years. And it was a struggle getting a library here and then, you know, look at us now, so makes me feel so proud. There was a nice little article in the Sentinel last week and I have a copy of it at the library if anyone wants to take a look at it, it was really nicely done and Michael St. Pierre wrote that for the Sentinel, so. Again, just a lot of fun we have and so many people to help out, it's really, it was a wonderful year. I did want to just say one more thing with the total collection, so the items in the library are 27,740, all stuffed in that one building. And the total registered patrons we have currently, 2,659, so that's a good representation for Berwick.
Absolutely, and, and just, I think just remind anybody who's watching or here too that, that 27,000, yes, is a lot in that small space, but the amount of collaboration with the other libraries in the state, that if it's something that's not in our library that people can request and that your team's always able to get it for them too and how that's linked together, so it's really, you know, if people think it's just, oh, it's a new book and it's not there yet, you always have a way of finding it for us.
We do, we do.
I take advantage of quite often, so thank you.
We get one delivery a week and that's a good turnaround time. There's very few things I can't find. If I don't find it and I can't access it within the area for someone or throughout the state, because we also have, the universities are through Maine Cat, we're linked into them too. So there's very few things I can't find. If I've come across, I think, one or, once or twice in a couple of years, I, I look at it and I see what the price is on it and I'll usually buy it, because if somebody is asking me for it, somebody somewhere else might want it too. So we try to please and we usually are able to do that. It's a great system.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the director? Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, thank you, it's gonna be a great year.
No other department reports, for appointments and presentations on the guests, we have Main Water, thank you guys.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate you having us. My name's Mike Cummins, for those who I haven't met yet, I serve as Vice President at Main Water Company. Joe Dignam, he's our Chief Plant Operator of our Ebitifer and Saco Treatment Facility and he also oversees operations with John Jacobs here in, here in Berwick and you, at this point, you probably know John and Joe better than you know me, but that's okay, that's the way it's, it's supposed to work. And, and in our, in our agreement, we, we did agree to meet twice per year with the Select Board to provide an update, but as a reminder, don't let that twice a year be a hindrance in, in communication if there's, if there's questions. Before I turn it over to Joe for, for an operations report, I do want to share with the group that we do a customer satisfaction survey and we issue those surveys four times per year for an annual average and we are, we're halfway through the year, we're happy to announce that we're at 90% satisfaction, so internally we always set an 85% threshold, which in the utility world is, is really good. We've, we've been at 90 for, for a while, but it's, it's really important for customers who receive the survey, it's, it's sent out electronically, that's how we get the most data back, to participate and, and to offer their feedback, we really want to hear it, we really do use it and there's, there are areas for comments, so customers can talk about a certain situation that they thought went well or talk about an experience or something regarding their water service that could be improved and we do look at it and we do nail it down and, and go to work on it, so. While I'm in the public forum, I, I'm gonna use the opportunity to, to talk about that. I'll let Joe do the operations report and then we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Evening, everyone. I think we might, I don't know, do we have some new faces, it's been?
Couple new, yes.
Yes, for anyone that hasn't been, my name is Joe Dignam. I am Chief Operator of Ebitifer and Saco Water Treatment Plant, as Mike said, but I oversee operations here in Berwick as well. You'll see our lead operator, John Jacobs, he's the one who's in town every day, most of you probably seen him around at one point or another and I'm here helping him out as needed. It's been John and I since Main Water took over the Berwick Water System, so that hasn't changed and that's gonna continue to, to be that way, so. We've gone off to a rocky start here, but we're, Berwick's grown on us, I can say, we're, it's, we're coming along and I'm happy to, I'm happy to be here in front of you all now with a operations report. Everything is going smoothly and there's no big news, which in our world is a good thing, we're not explaining any big problems or anything like that, so. I looked back and the last time we met was about a year ago, I think, is that right? Unless you, Mike's been out here since, I don't think so. So since then, when, one of the things we were talking about, aside from the manganese issue last year, was our planned upgrades to the water treatment plant in the fall of 2024. So part of those upgrades were gonna be new filter media, underdrains in the filters, rebuilding those whole units, all the internal components as well as the pumps and blowers, which are integral parts of the water treatment plant. So we had some failures early on when we took over, so those had to be addressed right away, so that was the first round of upgrades, that was completed successfully. All the new equipment went online in late 2024, ready to begin in December 24. So with that online, as well as our solution to the manganese issue, which is in, still in play now, we're doing the same thing we were last year. We have a manual pump, we dose potassium per manganese to be able to oxidize the manganese before it enters the plant and remove it, which is working great. The only addition since last year is we've added a online manganese analyzer to be able to measure the manganese levels in the raw water, in the finished water, in real time and we can see it remotely from home, so we don't have to keep coming in and measuring it to track it going up and down, because it can go up extremely quickly and it can come down just as fast, so. One of the, the key, the key points of the treatment that we're doing with potassium per manganese is you have to see it, the manganese, before you can treat it, or else you can overdose and it can create actually pink water, because you don't, you don't have anything for it to oxidize. So we have to see, we have to track that manganese going up, treat it, knock it back down, but if it drops out on us really quickly, we have to be, we have to know that so we can lower the dosage as well. So it's kind of a cat and mouse game with it, but. It's under, you know, we're, we're, we had this whole year now, we've been fine tuning it, so it's, we're pretty, pretty comfortable with it, the system now. So contract number one, we finished that upgrade, so that brings us into contract number two, which I did get an update from your consultant, engineering consultant, Ray Pierce from Dan Flag. He, he sent over a couple of notes on what they're working on and the progress of their projects for the town of Berwick. And the major one right now is, it will be upgrade contract number two. And a part of that will be a larger potassium per manganese contact chamber, which will be built in front of the treatment plant underground and will give us the needed contact time to be able to handle those wild fluctuations in manganese and be able to, so we're not getting a spike in it that makes it through the treatment plant. So that's gonna be one major part of it. The second major part of it is going to be a, the solids handling for the treatment plant, we talked about this last time. Currently, we have to recycle all of the back, well, filter backwash water that's, that's produced in the process of filtering, all the manganese and everything out of the water. When we clean the filters, we have to recycle that water back to the plant and during times that water quality, it can just kind of build on itself and it, it can compound and make it very difficult to treat. So where we left off last time was we were in talks with the sewer district about potentially sending some of that water to the sewer department and we've now met with them and we've submitted an application to them, which is under review from their engineers and in the final stages of approval there, so things are looking positive for being able to do that. Part of contract two will upgrade that system, it'll renew everything, make the tanks bigger to place the pumps that pump to the sewer and all that infrastructure will be replaced and upgraded. So they are, they're currently looking at, the scoping is, is about 90% done for that and the, the design is gonna be underway here shortly and we're expecting construction on all of those upgrades in early, early 2026, which is about to begin construction start mid 2026 is our goal right now. In addition to that, we will also be upgrading the internals of the treatment plant, meaning chemical systems, chemical storage, chemical pumps, valves, actuators, kind of the nuts and bolts of the treatment plant. We'll be putting a, a small addition on the building, so we'll be able to section off all the chemicals in their own rooms, their own containments and do everything safe and correct of the way it should be done. So everything will get renewed and the treatment plant will get a facelift and the funds for that already exist in the, in the grant money that the town has already secured. Before I move on, is there any questions on, on all that?
I think, yeah, I was gonna say the only question I had was, you know, the, the pre-treatment, that potassium, when did you think that timeline was gonna be for that section, because I know that was, as soon as contract two hit, that was kind of the big one we were all concerned about, because again, when it comes to water, manganese has been the one that's been driving this, especially this time of year. The concerns the last four or five years or even beyond.
That is, I mean, it's hard to pick a priority, because you have so many things that you need to, these couple of things are all equally important, but, yeah, it looks like next year we'll be able to get a permanent solution in and which will also involve a different and more permanent chemical setup. Right now, we're, for feeding potassium, right, we're mixing it by hand right now, we're feeding it manually and monitoring it, but it'll be more automated once we get everything updated, so. It'll be, shouldn't be a whole lot different for the town we're treating, if, if we weren't treating it right now, the water would be yellow right now, but it's, it's being treated and we're able to handle it and the effluent is, is, is well below that 0.05 milligram per liter threshold where customers might see some discarded lines, so we're able to control it, but the upgrades will allow us to do that in a more automated fashion. So in line with that, kind of going, a parallel project is the study for the interconnection with Summersworth, so that's moving along right now. Ray Pierce has, they're looking at October for a draft scoping, a draft study for the installation of the interconnection, so the, the capacity development grant that the town secured will, will cover the, the study and that will tell us the dollars that we're gonna need to be able to pull that off. So it'll be a, a crossing over the bridge to Summersworth and then we'll have a pump station. And you guys may know more about this than me, but there's a parcel of land on Somnail Hill that was identified as a potential spot for the booster station, which would have to be a pumping station to pump water from Summersworth into our system, just because of the hydraulic grade differences. So look, look out for a, a finished study later this year on that and then we'll be able to come up with a, a plan for, or hopefully moving forward with that. That's really all I've got, is those, is those couple of items. Operationally, in the past, in the past year, this summer, every hydrant has been touched, we've been through, doing, we've repaired several of them, the system has gotten a complete flush as well as the, the storage tank on the hill, we cleaned that. We've had a few water main breaks that, that we've been able to, to take care of quickly and, but otherwise in the system, everything's been, been pretty good, John's busy with a lot of work orders, we've got development going in, there's a lot of new customers coming in and, you know, I think we're on track to probably produce about between two and five percent more water in 2025 than we did in 24. A lot of that is due to flushing, we did a lot more flushing than was done in the past, so we'll see a lot more water usage, but part of that is also the development, which, which will continue to go up, but so far the plant has been able to handle all of it without issues, so. I don't have any bad news today, so that's all I've got. I'll open it up to any questions you guys have about, about the water system.
I'm new on this, so I have it on the floor, but what is the capacity of the system right now, for how many customers can it serve?
It's hard to say what, how many customers per se, because I, you know, the usage is different for every, every customer, but the plant is designed for a million gallons a day.
We don't hear that.
And right, right now, we're, right now, we make around 200 to 300,000 gallons.
Yeah, I think that's always been something we hear, concern with, with planning or development and, and the guests, you guys have been in contact with the sewer department for waste and I think that is a concern of the residents of like, when we see this time of year with manganese, right, like they always think that we're taxing the plant so much or we're taxing the sewer department and I think when we actually talk about it to hear that the plant's at 30% capacity, the sewer department, I think, is at something similar, 25 or 30% capacity, that, you know, I think sometimes we, we get drawn to that exception and not, not what goes on every day, right? I mean.
Right, there's, and there's room, there's room to expand it, you know, if you need this property there and that's, the, the actual design of that treatment plant is a, even though it's, it's built, kind of custom into the building, it is technically a package plant and they sell those units that, you know, we could add another filter and add another pump that we could pump more water if we need to. It's all doable, but, yeah, we, you know, generally you say that a person uses about 50 gallons a day, that's kind of roughly what we, what we do and, and we figure this, on, on average, industry standard is about two and a half people per service connection, you know, so on average, some more, some less, but we'll, there's about 1,000 customers in town, so we serve roughly 2,500, 2,700 people on the system, so there's, there's plenty of room for expansion. And it's, it's honestly good because it keeps the water turned over more.
Is, is there anything you would have for suggesting that you want, you know, clients or people on the water to, to know, you know, from, from an operational standpoint or as a tip standpoint or as you go into summer, you know?
You know, the only thing I would just, I would want them, people to know is that we're here and we care, we're paying attention and, you know, we, we really want this water system and, and this, it to be successful, these projects to be successful and, you know, we're working every day to make sure that everyone has the best water they can possibly have, because it hasn't been that way historically and we, we sympathize with the people that, that have issues and bring issues to us and, you know, we get, we get a lot of different, different colorful comments, different things, but, you know, we try to work with everybody the best we can and we're, we're here, are genuinely here to help, so. You know, we try to work with everybody the best we can and we're we're here, are genuinely here to help, so.
Yeah, I think that just from my tenure here, so when we were before water, we had so many issues and such a lack of continuity. With staffing and issues and up and down that I think it's been um it it's been, sorry, it's been a good investment. To have main water and and we've seen lots of improvements. Just just some of the upgrades alone getting completed has been a big thing. So we we appreciate that.
Any other questions for Joe? Any questions for Mike? Mike, when is, refresh me, when is our contract up for renewal with Main Water?
Uh it's a, yeah, it's a, we're we're on the, we're on the first year of a two-year agreement.
Okay, perfect, that's.
Yep, so we have twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six.
Excellent. And again, just, you know, to echo Linda's sentiment, I mean, I remember when we joined the board together and it was. That'd be one of the worst summers that I can remember as far as treatment um manganese issues, plant issues, plant failure, you know.
Personnel issues.
Personnel issues, um you you guys have been phenomenal from from our standpoint. Um is there anything that you're looking for from us as a town or as a board that we can be helpful with?
Well, yeah, I uh I won't echo what Joe just said, but what I would say for any, you know, select board member or any community member is if you have a question, don't don't sit on it. Just call call our one eight hundred number and and I know the select board has our our contact info as does Arthur. Just just email us or or call us and and we'll get back to you. We're we're not going anywhere and we we strive to be available, so.
You mentioned that you thought there was like a ninety percent approval on the information you got back from people. Do you know the percentage of people that actually responded?
Yeah, I off the top of my head, I don't. I don't. I I can find out and follow up with the select board.
If it's like anything else, a lot of people probably complaining, but you don't really hear.
That, yeah, that I think that just like a lot of surveys, that, you know, we we've we we've gotten more participation since we've moved to electronic, which has been great. It used to be a phone call. Um and as soon as we went electronic, the the participation improved, but, you know, we don't get the feedback from the majority of our customers simply because they're living their lives and they're and they're busy like all of us. But I but I can get you that number on on how many participate. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Main Water?
Do you guys give tours?
I'd love a tour.
Absolutely, yeah. Um you just reach out to have Arthur share my contact.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
We'll see you, Joe, on Thursday? Joe, we'll see you Thursday at the tabletop?
You'll see John.
I thought he was on vacation. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. For those listening, Joe's on vacation, John will be on here. Thank you. All right, unfinished business. Local traffic only signs on Ireland Drive, so Arthur, do you have an update for us?
I do.
To us of today?
Um we had you guys, at the last meeting, you guys had voted to authorize local traffic only signs to be placed on Island Drive. Um in doing the recent, in DPW doing the research, come to find out that the manual and uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD. Which basically guide your traffic signs, says you can only use local traffic only signs when you are closing a road. What they recommend is no through traffic. So what I'm looking for the board to do is to rescind the vote for the local traffic and and authorize the no through traffic signs, basically.
I will make a motion to rescind the local traffic only sign and then grant the town and DPW to put up no through traffic signs on Ireland Drive.
I'll second that.
Linda actually made the motion, so if she could rescind, that would be great.
Can you please rescind your previous?
I made a motion to rescind my previous motion to approve the um traffic only signs. Uh on Island Drive and to change those signs to no through traffic.
I'll second that.
As we're all silent now. Um motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Um DPW has put some temporary signs out there in lieu of you guys making the vote. And at launch here, as I did have some of the residents from Island Drive come up and thank us for that because they said that they feel that they're actually working that. There's less traffic and people slowing down as they're going through there.
Good, good.
Did you have anything to add to Jeff, I thought?
No, I'm good.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Or do? I think too, just um as follow up, just if there's anything, if they're seeing more, remind the residents, please reach out to the PD. Please let us know how it's going, so.
This total touches it a little bit too, but you gave us the report on Cranberry Meadow Road.
Yes.
Are they, do they have a bunch that they're going to be looking at also? Are they going to continue to use this in many places?
He's gonna, he's gonna continue to circulate them around town and then he'll give me the reports, which then I'll forward it on to you guys. And what they do, and I and I've seen this in the PD, is if they have an issue with a particular. Road where they have a lot of speeding or something, they'll do brick directed patrols that is up on their bulletin board directed patrols on this road during this timeframe, depending on what the data shows. So he's gonna circulate them throughout the town.
The one really startling was the Cranberry Meadow Road. They had somebody who went eighty some miles an hour. I mean, that's nuts.
Yeah, that is.
All right, uh town manager report.
Okay, um several weeks ago, the board awarded the contract for the outstanding electrical work. As part of the project, the power needs to be turned off. The electric company determines. When they want to do it and they want to do it August twenty seventh. I'm hoping that the board will vote to close the municipal office on that day because we will have no power. We cannot use the generator. Basically, there'll be no service to the building while the elect, some of the the electrical upgrades are happening. That have been outstanding for the last three and a half, four years.
I know Lisa's not here and she had concerns with only being open three days on the last week of the month. I'm not opposed because I I we have one power company, right? Like.
Right.
We're we're subject to to when they set the date and I get that as as a business, I get the same thing. When with with my job, it's this is what it is and we don't have any flexibility on that. I think my one request and and if not for this one, but if for future, when we have things coming up like this. If there's a way we can look at with department heads or or it's customer service of trying to utilize those Fridays as a flex, if for some reason we can't avoid doing work on a Friday.
Yep, I will certainly have that discussion with all the department heads at the next department head meeting and we can. Make it, we usually have enough notice that we can just say that we're going to open on that Friday. It's happened so infrequently that it's it's worth it. And to be honest with you, if we were going to. Have some power here, I wouldn't even be here, but we can't even do any kinds of transactions or anything that day because literally everything's going to be shut down.
Yeah, we're gonna put out the appropriate notification, ECM, do all that stuff, yeah. Just to back what Mike said is sometimes with these contractors, it's it's a day, it's inconvenient, it's, you know, but the thing is, is. The work needs to get done and to say, oh, well, we have to choose a different date and it's months down the road. If you have a contractor who has a date and is ready to come in, you need to get him in here and get it done and put it behind us. I I. It is going to be inconvenient timing wise, but I think to get it done, we just we just need to do it, but I I do like the idea of, you know, the flexible Friday.
I'm not saying the snow days or anything else that comes up, but something that we foresee contracted three, four, or five weeks down the road that we can.
Make arrangements to deal with that Friday.
Yeah, it doesn't happen that often, so, yeah.
So was this was was this, because I I went on CMP's website and it's very easy to reschedule a date with CMP. You literally fill it out and send it in and they give you the next available. Was a Friday stipulated from the get-go?
It was asked to be, it was, we asked them to be a Friday, but ultimately.
I just, I I personally have a lot of heartache with not having this done on Friday. I I I think, you know, we're only open four days, you're closing one one day. I just, I see no reason why it can't be scheduled on a Friday. I I just, I I don't. I mean, it seems like any work that should be done on this building should be scheduled for Fridays. And I understand when when you go and read the CMP website, they give you their next available time slot, which means. You know, but right there it says, contact us to reschedule. I I don't think it's that hard to reschedule.
We if if.
Uh that that's my um, that's my thing. I I understand the contractor's here when he's here, but I I think we have a responsibility to be open for the town. On the four days a week that we're open. One of the biggest things I hear about is the fact that this building's only open four days a week. I hear that from a number of people. And to to take one, take one more day out, I just, I I think it should be done on a Friday.
How about this? We have one more meeting before the twenty seventh, which would be August nineteenth. Arthur, is there any way to try to see if CMP can reschedule that work to to a Friday or where it went, send it kicking it way down the road? And if for any reason that.
Didn't you already do that, though? Didn't you already ask them for a Friday?
And yes, the contract.
We asked, we asked them, but ultimately you're at their mercy on what they give you. But we can go back and ask again and see if we can reschedule it. See if we can get lucky with the reschedule for a Friday.
Just just see how long it would kick. If if not, we're giving people a week's notice that we're we're closing in a day. Maybe we just kind of have a tentative, but I, and Cyrus, I see your point, but I think a lot of that with CMP two is not full day major contractor jobs. That that they reschedule. It's it's business, it's it's in-house, it's. So I I I see both, I see both sides, but I've I've had it both ways where it's. You don't know what they have for major projects down that line too. So them rescheduling might be.
A Tuesday or a Monday.
It could be something that's not a Friday in January, you know, so, but I mean, I think it's worth asking.
Yep.
Contractor got a Friday available, is that?
I believe, I believe so. And what happened is the contractor contacted CMP and asked for a Friday, but this is what they gave us ultimately. They were at their mercy, but we can certainly go back and ask. I mean, how does the board feel? We just kind of.
I mean, I I I think it should be on a Friday.
But even if he goes back and asks, you may still not get a Friday.
Right, but I I think you go back and you ask and you explain it, I'm I'm willing to bet you talked to the right person, they could schedule it for a Friday.
My only concern is that we've already, we've already asked, the contractor already asked for a Friday, it was told, now you get this date. And so if we hold off, we're giving people less notice.
And at this point in time, yeah, exactly.
That's that's my concern. So you're saying, let's wait till the next meeting.
Two and a half weeks for them to get scheduled to come in and get something done.
Right.
As opposed to we do it on the, what, four or five days ahead and then they're.
Right.
Yeah, I know Arthur originally was going to bring this up next meeting and I asked to put it on this meeting so that if we were going to vote to close, we gave people three weeks' notice.
Right, that's my, I would rather give people a notice.
Patty, how busy is a, how busy do you foresee a Wednesday being at the end of the end of the month with?
Well, it's typically busier at the end of the month, obviously, and the beginning of the month.
Would you see any issues closing on Wednes- on a Wednesday? Maybe you can put it on the spot, I'm sorry. No, it's fair.
Wow, wait, it's one hundred percent.
I know, right? Um, yes, I mean, obviously, it's a day less that people can come to town hall. I mean, is it possible to have a skeleton crew in so we can tell people and if the power's only out for four hours, then we could call staff and.
We, I don't know. An another option is to have the staff come in. We deal with what we can deal with. Other than sort of transactions, I'm sure that there's enough paperwork and and work that can be done in all the departments without without the um. Without transactions and the only thing we'll have to do is get some lamps or some lanterns or something into the bathrooms because. The men's room isn't a problem because they have natural light, but I don't know if there's a women's room have any natural light. I can honestly say I've never been in there. We could throw a battery because we'll have water. We just won't have any electricity.
Which means you won't be able to use your computers or anything.
Correct.
Which, yeah, which means you can't, you can't do your job.
So we're paying people to be in there and kind of.
You can't assist customers with registrations or payments of any kind.
Can't run a cash register, you can't.
But you could take phone numbers and call them if, say, the power comes back at noon. Because we don't know how long the project is going to take, right?
No, they just, they told us the plan for the day. I mean, my experience with electric companies is if they say they're going to be there at noon, let's hope they get there by two.
The other thing is it's an older building. They don't know what they're going to run into when they start getting in there.
Yep.
Hence why the upgrades to begin with. And this and this has been an ongoing project here for a while.
A while.
Or you could open Friday.
Yeah, that's four days.
That's the board's prerogative, we can certainly.
What is the, what is the issue with um the union ice? You'd have to have an agreement with them. Don't they have a set schedule?
We can change their schedule with two weeks' notice.
You got two weeks. Schedule a Friday. Tell them to work Friday. That way they're open four days a week. That week, it's just different days. Be interesting too, because if they're open on a Friday, it'd be interesting to see what the traffic is. To kind of see, because we haven't worked Friday in a while. Let's see how much traffic we have on that Friday.
Do you remember when we went to closing Friday? Really open Friday when we got on the board?
Yeah.
It was twenty twenty, we switched right after the pandemic.
Right, coming out.
Right before the pandemic, the pandemic.
Not during or during.
During.
It was right before we came on the board.
Well, during, yes, and then after, we went to the four-day week.
And I and I I understand what Cyrus is saying about, he hears a lot of people complaining about Friday, but in that time, we got a lot of compliments about that because. People who work, it doesn't matter whether it's Monday through Friday, it's like, I can't, I can't go in at lunchtime and do it. So the fact that we're open later at the four days that we are here allows people after work to come in and register their car, pay their taxes, do that. But you're always going to have naysayers one way or the other on any, on any schedule. But um that was the benefit out of it for as far as the public goes is being open later means that if you get out of work at four thirty or five, you can still go. Conduct your business. You don't have to take time off from work to go do your business. But it might be interesting if they just shift their day that week to see where the traffic is on Friday, to relook at it.
I can certainly do that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold what you have on traffic for Friday to hot because nobody realizes we're open on Friday, so your traffic may be light just because people aren't used to us being open on Friday.
Right, and we're gonna, if we if we vote on that tonight, then we have several weeks of class of that everywhere.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Oh, make it a motion. I'll make a motion that, what's the date again? Yeah, I'm sorry, give me a date again.
Uh it'd be closing the twenty seventh and opening the twenty ninth.
Okay, so I make a motion that we close the town office on Wednesday, the twenty seventh and open the town office on Friday, the twenty ninth.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? I would just say, see how that works and see, see how the team likes it. I know they might like their three-day weekends, but they might find that.
Again, this is an anomaly. This isn't an everyday thing. This is, we're responding to, you know, we need to get this electrical work. Like you said, we've been kicking the can for a while. We need to get it done.
I will notify the union tomorrow, so maybe there we make sure we have ample notice.
Yeah, they have to have, yeah, two weeks.
Right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, um I attended the second part of the two-part training on the public sector wage and hourly compliance. It was actually very interesting. We talked about full-time, part-time, lunches, fifteen-minute breaks, what's paid, what's unpaid, things like that. We held a department head meeting. It went well. The primary focus and discussion was about the upcoming budget season, which is hard to believe will be here before you know it. But we talked about a zero-budget process, starting off at zero with everything and working up from there and anything that we can. Look at potentially getting new quotes on that we're not tied into a contract with or that is a specialty, i.e. like. The Axion cameras that the police department use, the body cameras. That's a specialty. You're not going to go out for contract, but we want to try to get some bids and see if we can. Get some better pricing or at least hold people honest to the pricing. Thanks. Um I'm also, I met with the um principal over at the middle school. Yesterday, I believe it was, and I'm going to reach out to the superintendent. I want to look at seeing, maybe doing some. Uh combining of buying of things too, whether we can get a decent price. A simple example that I use is they get a thousand cases of paper. Maybe if we had another thousand cases, both the school and the town can benefit from a lower price per case. they get a thousand cases of paper. Maybe if we had another thousand cases, both the school and the town can benefit from from a lower price per case.
Yep.
Um, uh, just vacation. I spent a significant amount of time catching up on emails and calls. Um, I attended and participate in the meeting for the mill rate, which we guys will be on the agenda for next meeting. He's just finalizing a couple of things. Uh, SBA, Small Business Association, came in and met with James and I, and they're going to look at doing some trainings and things in the area for 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 the community. Uh, I attended a meeting. We have the Summersworth tabletop Summersworth Berwick tabletop exercise coming up on Thursday where we're going run through a couple of different scenarios. Uh, for example, one of them's a train vehicle element at the bridge. How would we react in both communities with all of our forces and things like that? And attended and participated in a long chairs, which went very well. Um, always a good time, always a good crowd, and the weather was beautiful.
I went by the Dunkin' Booth. I didn't see you there.
I I I volunteered for it, but all the all the rec kids wouldn't let me get in it, and I'm okay with that.
It was actually the first thing I asked Tara when I walked by. I was like, where's Arthur? And she's like, he was at the other time.
I was available.
So Arthur, just to follow up with your um, uh, train potential exercise there. I know you said you're attending. Is our fire police attending?
Fire police, um, James, Water will be there.
Okay, great, alright.
Yeah, all the parties. We had a a pre-meeting yesterday, I believe it was, with with Summersworth, although all of our party's highway will be there.
Okay, okay, good.
Any questions for the town manager? Thank you, Arthur.
Hmm.
We have no select board communications. Approval of accounts payable and payroll warrants. I didn't double check to see if you guys shuffled them.
I did.
Police is not here to do that to me. We have payroll warrant number nine dated July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one hundred ten thousand, five hundred sixty seven dollars and four cents. We have payroll warrant number ten dated July thirty first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred eighty six dollars and fifty four cents. We have payroll warrant number eleven dated July thirty first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one thousand, five hundred thirty six dollars and forty cents. We have accounts payable warrant number twelve dated July thirty first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of two hundred forty three thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and one cent. We have accounts payable warrant number thirteen dated July thirty first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of ninety four thousand, four hundred forty four dollars and eighty five cents. We have payroll warrant number fourteen dated August seventh, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred twenty five dollars and seventeen cents. We have accounts payable warrant number fifteen dated August fifth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of nine hundred twenty one thousand, four hundred eighty seven dollars and forty cents. And we have accounts payable warrant number sixteen dated August fifth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred sixty five dollars and forty four cents. And make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Accounts bills paid. All right, new business. The first one is the purchase and sales agreement for land for Public Works expansion. Arthur, did you want to talk a little bit about this one? Or James, did you want to talk a little bit about this one? Either either one? I know this is one that we've had.
Yeah.
Kind of in the works a while.
There's a project that started with Steve Eldridge.
Yep.
So, uh, Public Works expansion, there's a I don't have the exact design for the um, expansion, but the idea is to have a couple of bays and like a lift for the trucks. Uh, we have more equipment than we have space for. So that's kind of the main need, and then there's a whole renovation with adding an office down there as well. Uh, but to make room for for that, the footprint of the building, we need to acquire a couple of small strips of land. Um, this is the first property owner. There's a second property owner that will follow. Maybe two or three months from now, they have to get releases from their mortgage, which takes quite a bit of time, so. Um, so that's the reason for uh, this purchase and sales this evening is for that small piece of piece of land.
Yeah, I remember. This is probably one of the first things that actually came up when we sat on the board talking about it. And for Cyrus and Jeffries, I recall, it looks like this piece is almost right behind the current building, right?
It'll go, yeah, it'll it'll be connected to the existing building. The bay will be a little bit deeper to accommodate the larger vehicles. Um, so the backs will be, I forget if the backs will be aligned, but either way, we based on where there's a water line, that would be extremely cost prohibitive to move. Uh, that's why it's that's the location of where that building needs to go.
So is there more than just these two parcels, parcel A and parcel B?
If that those are the two pieces that the town will be working on. It's it's just those two pieces.
Okay, but you said we're only purchasing one now?
Yes.
Okay.
The purchase and sale is ready for one property.
Okay.
And the second property owner, they're on board. They're going through the process of getting their mortgage released.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a fun process. And this is this is all from the pre-approved funding from from several years ago, right? Okay.
I believe there's two warrant articles, one for a little over two hundred thousand dollars, another one for fifty or thousand or so.
Yeah, one's for development of the plan and all that stuff, right?
Hmm, yep.
All right, so it looks like I will make a motion to authorize a spending of seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of the first lot of the expansion.
I'll second.
Is that all we needed, right? On that one? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. Okay.
You guys should have a copy in there for you guys to also sign for the purchase and sales.
Okay, thank you. I do have that one. Um, all right, marijuana caregiver retail store license renewal, five one three Portland Street, Trican.
Uh, Trican's been in existence since twenty eighteen. There's been no uh, police complaints. I think I missed the timing to get the memo into you guys. I'm sorry for that one.
Okay, I was looking for it. Thank you.
But yeah, no police concerns. There's been no code violations or anything like that from the beginning.
Yeah, this is just a renewal for them, correct?
Yep, yep.
Do I hear a motion on the renewal?
I make a motion on the renewal. For Trican.
Do I hear a second?
I will second. I thought he was going to give you the address. I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, James. Uh, policy directive purchasing.
Yes, what I'm what I'm asking the board to do is basically increase the amount for a formal bid to twenty thousand, one dollars rather than ten thousand. The reason why I'm asking that is twofold. One, in today's world, it costs ten thousand dollars to pick up a screwdriver and have somebody turn it. Two, the formal bids, we're not getting any responses when we go out to formal bid on projects. We're getting more responses when we direct call people. In the policy that I'm proposing, the changes will still require us to call people and prove that we that we went out and looked for bidding. It just won't be the formal bid process that we do now for anything over ten thousand dollars. And ultimately, if times change and it's easy, it's A, more economics to get somebody to turn a wrench for less than ten thousand dollars, or B, we have people willing to bid on stuff, we can always come back and bring it back to the ten thousand, one dollars.
Yeah. Everything's just gotten so more expensive.
And it doesn't look like it changes anything for approval of the carbon header cost. Just you're just looking for just the bid?
Yes.
What are the changes in the back for the credit cards? Department heads are no longer required to authorize payments before forwarding them to finance?
No, that was that was duplicated on there. If you look down below, it says the same thing. It was just a duplicate, cut and paste. So I eliminated the duplicate of it.
And then the okay, the bottom one where all credit card receipts must be turned into finance within thirteen, fifteen days of purchase?
We pulled that out of the personnel policy manual to make that a procedure as opposed to a policy.
That was Lisa's request, I think a couple meetings ago.
Yep.
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the policy directive purchasing proposal. Is anybody town manager? It would be increased from ten to twenty thousand, one dollar.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll bring a clean copy at the next meeting for you guys to sign.
Thank you. And then social media policy, Arthur.
I'm looking to update our social media policy. This is one that
Thanks, James. Sorry.
This that's okay. This is one that changes frequently with the laws. This is one that I did work on with town council because I'm not confident enough to write social media policies myself because of the 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 laws in regards to municipal workers or government workers is very different than the laws in regards to URI in the public. So I wanted to make sure that I didn't violate any laws. I center several different examples upon it, and this is what we got back from the town council as our new social media policy if the board approves it. I believe it hasn't been updated for a few years.
This stuff is so fluid.
Oh, yeah, and as I said, as a government worker, I have different rights than you. I have more rights than you as a private citizen.
Right, absolutely.
As far as social media goes.
Yep.
Normally, I feel pretty confident in writing policies, but not this one with all the legalities of it.
Yeah.
Do you know what major changes would be from the current social media policy to what might be updated through this one?
There are not a ton of major changes. Right now, it's because we have social media policies or procedures in two places. We have it in the personnel policy manual, and then we have a standalone social media policy. So basically, what we're doing is we're taking those two and combining it. I'm going to pull it out of the personnel manual with a with a note in there that it has to be signed off when you're hired, and then it will also have to be signed off on a yearly basis uh, because it changes so much. So basically, we're combining everything, making sure we're up to date with the current laws. Um.
Yeah, I know the same. I know we do ours every year.
Yeah.
So that's. I will make a motion to adopt the new Town of Berwick social media use policy just effective August fifth, twenty twenty five? There's no date on it, so.
August fifth, yeah. All right, I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yeah, of course.
Town manager is the only one that can create social uh, town social media accounts?
Um, you can you can change that. That's from the old policy. That's the way it has been, but that certainly can be changed.
No, I'm just I'm just asking. That's that's okay. All right.
To make official town Facebook accounts.
Right.
Well, or any social media account.
Yes, that's I forget about Twitter and those things. I'm not on those.
All right, that was it. That was just my question.
Okay, no, absolutely. It's a good one. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Again, I'll bring you guys a clean copy at the next meeting.
Okay. We have no quitclaim deeds or installment contracts, no abatements or supplements. Second public comment. Sorry to make a, oh, God, I'm just making sure.
Just checking.
We have no executive session. Uh, any other business not agenda items from anybody?
Yeah, just a couple. I don't know where to go, but anyway, um, do we have a staff status on Haflinger Lane? Where that is at the.
Yes, um, it is with town council right now. They are doing up a draft motion for the courts. We are proceeding with the courts. Um, right now, I am all over town council to get that rolling because it's been with them for a while. Um, so yeah, we are on them to get that rolling and go through the court process.
Are we holding them to the original?
Yes, because the planning board denied the um, the amended plan. The planning board denied it, so we'll be holding them to the original.
Add it to the agenda for the next one? I guarantee, yeah, okay, they can be reviewed and.
Yeah, because what they're.
I just have one other thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
For your mic.
Yes.
If you ask the town manager for something, if you email him, do you CC everybody on the?
I do.
He does, yeah.
I I I do a blind CC to everybody that way there, and it's my own paranoia. That way there, if somebody hits reply all, nobody can say that you had uh, an illegal meeting.
Yeah, I'm just looking because it kind of gives you a heads up.
Yeah, so.
On anything that might be coming down the road, so.
A lot of it is actually if any one of you ask Arthur a question and he responds, he'll reply all to all of us.
Yep.
And it's on a blind CC. Um, yeah, so usually if you see me chime in on something, it's it's to everybody, so.
That was the one thing I had asked Arthur. Oh, have you heard anything on I was curious on the website hits on the select board meetings?
The number of hits?
Right.
I have not yet because that's something I'll have to get from Jeremy when he comes back.
Oh, he's still on, okay.
Apparently medical leave.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Any other business not agenda items? Make a motion. Go ahead.
Uh, one question.
Yes.
Before we make that motion. Uh, I know Jeremy's on his leave. Is there anyone filling in for him even on a special basis?
Oh, yeah. Um, the assistant director, Jacob, is filling in for him.
Okay. Okay.
And and Jeremy has been great at being available if there's been a question, but if it if it's an emergency thing, I usually would go to Jacob and then follow up with Jeremy or go to Jeremy and he'll follow.
So we still have the cotton area with that?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, perfect. That's all.
Jacob's been doing a great job of what he's been putting out, too.
He has.
Yeah, I wondered that because I saw stuff going out and I'm like, well, Jeremy's not.
And what I've done is I've been on my biweekly meetings with department heads, I've had Jacob step in, and I've been meeting with him biweekly instead, obviously instead of Jeremy because he's out, so that we're there. If he needs any kind of support or anything, it's he's got it.
That's good. That's good.
Any other business not agenda items? I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I'm ready to hit.